We would invite everyone to the character to join us in a recitation of the Lord's Prayer, followed by a moment of silence, and then at the beginning of the meeting when it asks that all pads be removed according to council rules.
Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. And lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. For thine is the kingdom, and the power, and the glory forever. Amen.
Please remain standing. It is now seven o'clock. The city council meeting has called to order. Please join in and pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do you see it, please? Roll call, please, Mr. Crum.
Mr. Robb, here. Mr. Robb is here.
Mr. Cutlet, here. Mr. Martin, here.
Mr. Lawton, here.
I'm now entertaining for a motion to dispense with the reading of the Journal from June four, sixteen, two thousand twenty-five.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Robertson, and a second by Mr. Martin to dispense with the reading of the Journal from June sixteen, two thousand twenty-five. Discussion. Roll call, please.
Mr. Martin.
Yea.
Mr. Lawton.
Yea.
Mr. Robb.
Yea.
Mr. Robert.
Yea.
Mr. Cutlet.
Yea.
And motion passes. Now come to the time for public comment. If anyone appears to make comment to the council on any pending legislation or matter of which council action is desired, if you'd like to come to the podium, state your name and address, and make your address. The podium is open. There is no public comment. We move forward then to reports from standing in special committees. Committee on Economic Development, committee, council member Cutlet.
Yes, the Committee on Economic Development, committee, that June twenty-seventh. Well, just want to highlight Bicycle Days is coming up this weekend, July eleventh through twelfth. There'll be a ton of stuff going on. You can look up the schedule of events on the CIC website at the shelbycic.com. Fireworks will be Saturday at dusk. Um, the grant for the Shelby Building should be wrapping up next month, so we should have some more information about that coming up. Big news is the, for the economic development, let's say Carl Milliron purchased the old bank building in downtown for development. We're very excited about that. There has been four facade grants approved, ranging from roof to signage to concrete. We are just looking into getting in and seeing about doing a TIF, a tax incentive financing. It would allow us to save some tax money and put it into a fund and use it for downtown revitalization, but we are just getting in the early stages of that, so not too much to worry about. And the library is, the library always has this ton of stuff going on, but I wanted to highlight the end of summer reading car show coming up, July eighteen, from five to seven.
Thank you, Mr. Cutlet. Are there any questions or comments for Mr. Cutlet in regard to his report? Mr. Robb.
I'd like to apologize to Mr. Cutlet for missing that meeting. With the date change and the time change, it, it became a little difficult for me to be there. Thank you.
Dearly noted. Any comments or questions? Thank you, Mr. Cutlet. Move forward then to Public Works and General Operations Committee. Councilman Robb.
The committee met on June twenty-fourth. Mr. Geis advised us that most of the documents that would permit the CIC sale of the firehouse have been prepared and just waiting on the thirty-day for the ordinance to kick in. We have, again, have the charter amendment on tonight's agenda. Under parks, we discussed the situation with a, with a splash pad downtown. Seems there was a significant water loss that was occurring. A plan was put together to deal with that, and I see the last couple of weeks that's operating, so something must be working there. And last but not least, and especially, it was the, the cities receiving the grant for the safe routes to school, which is going to mean cyclos. We'll, we'll see that over here in the coming months, hopefully. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Councilman Robb. Are there any comments or questions for Mr. Robb in regard to his report? Mr. Robb, or Roberts?
Yeah, I would like to follow that. I'll make a happy, I was doing heavy rehab for my, for my knee replacement, so I was, I was unavailable for that.
I'm used to it. Dearly noted. Any other comments? Thank you, Councilman Robb. Move forward then to the Safety Committee, Councilmember Roberts.
The committee met on the second of July in, in the first of fire news. Received a grant for four thousand one hundred and sixty-one dollars from the Division of EMS for non-disclosure supplies. They got to use that money, that money's got to be spent by December thirty-first. So, July fourteenth, we'll start hybrid flushing and flow tests within the street department where they're permitted. Chief Thompson will let everybody know he's a tyrant, and his last day at the shift at the station will be on the very first of July. His last official day is June twelfth, and you want to thank council administrations at all, fire department staff, his family, citizens, for all the help and support through the years. He appreciates everything that they've accomplished together. We've got a new fire station, we've got a lot of new vehicles, so, so he is definitely, he's going to be missed. So, thank you. Police news, there will be a civil service meeting on ten, which is coming up Friday, in health news, we had five animal bite complaints. This is the time of year we get nuisance complaints, so the health department's going to deal with that. They've inspected manufactured home lots in town, inspected some food trailers during the, during the car show downtown, and as the, as Bicycle Days comes up, anybody who needs, you know, comes in, they'll have to be inspected, so they inspect those also Bicycle Days. Our, our new nurse, our new nurse is, she's taking the first month or so to meet different people and kind of let everybody know who she is around town, so that's, I guess that's the first thing we got to do. There was a outbreak of COVID at one of our nursing homes, it's been controlled, fifty cases. Mosquito season's in close wings, so we're going to be trapping, spraying, monitoring all that every single year. Thirty-one birth certificates presented and twenty-five death certificates, and we'll have a new reporting system that will help take, take care of those birth certificates and make everything more streamlined.
Thank you, Councilman Roberts. Are there any comments or questions for Mr. Robertson in regard to his report? Thank you, sir. We're now moving to reports of city officials. My mayor's report, the last couple of weeks, I've occupied the typical mayor of duties and delights. Also with the full agenda this evening, I have two special things under my report, one in regard to Chief Thompson's retirement, and the other, and the proclamation of recognition and commemoration to the Shelby Cycle Company, and that's why Mr. Christina Drane put us this evening. So, I know that the chief doesn't want a lot of hoopla in regard to his service and retirement here, but I did want to give this in the public record under my mayor's report. It is with fixed motions that I publicly acknowledge and confirm the upcoming retirement of Shelby Chief Mike Thompson. Chief Thompson has invested twenty-four-plus years in our fire department, selflessly serving the citizens of our city and the residents of Jackson and Sharon Townships, our fire district. In April of two thousand fifteen, Mr. Thompson was sworn in as our fire department chief. Since that time, he has done a commendable, commendable job as an innovator and one who inspired others through his servant leadership. It has been my pleasure and privilege to work alongside Chief Thompson since he took the reins a decade ago. He leaves behind an honorable legacy of a dedicated firefighter, advanced EMT, and chief. He truly will be missed by those who know him best. Although Chief Thompson is leaving our ranks, he'll be joining the great educational team at Pioneer Career and Technology Center here in Shelby. Pioneer could not have chosen a better person to be the instructor for their brand-new first responder program. Chief Thompson has a teaching background, an extensive knowledge base from his shared experiences with our police department and emergency room personnel, a talent for engaging audiences, and a real desire to inspire young people to seriously consider a career in the various fields connected with public safety. I consider his selection as a compliment to his family, the Shelby community and schools, and our fire department. On behalf of our city and our fire department, I want to sincerely express my appreciation to Chief Mike Thompson for a stellar career and his invaluable contributions over his long tenure as a, in public service. We wish him the very best in his life and in this new venture as an influential instructor and community partner. Thank you, Chief Thompson. Would you stand? We'd just want to give you a round of applause. Would you stand? Thank you, Chief. I also have a proclamation to deliver, and I, I think this proclamation will give context to Bicycle Days. A lot of newcomers in our area wondering, what is all this festivity about bicycles? And so Christina Drane has put together this proclamation, this is my brief for reading, and she'll be saying a few words afterwards. We have a special event planned for Friday here at, at the Justice Center, and so she's kind of filling those gaps. But I hope you'll listen closely. There's a lot of history woven throughout this proclamation, and I think we all learned a new appreciation of Shelby bicycles and even of Shelby Whippets. So, that, that's in there too, so. So, see if you, see if you listen, listen for the Whippets. Here we go, all right? Whereas the city of Shelby has a rich and storied industrial heritage, a legacy deeply intertwined with the innovation and craftsmanship of bicycle manufacturing, and whereas we gather to commemorate a significant milestone, the one-hundredth anniversary of the Shelby Cycle Company, recognizing its formal establishment and the beginning of its production of complete bicycles, uh, complete bicycles in nineteen twenty-five. Whereas the foundation of this remarkable enterprise was, was laid with the formation of the Shelby Cycle Frame and Builders in nineteen twenty-one, founded by A.D. Meiselbach, who was drawn to Shelby by the quality seamless tubing from the Ohio Seamless Tube Company and the promise of factory space. And whereas, facing early financial challenges, the company's future was secured by the critical financial backing and leadership of Joseph A. Seltzer in nineteen twenty-four, who became its president. And whereas, the unwavering tenacity of factory superintendent Leon A. Smith and eighteen dedicated employees was instrumental in keeping the factory operational and turning a profit, paving the way for the company, the company's transformation into the Shelby Cycle Company in nineteen twenty-five, thereby commencing the assembly of complete bicycles. And whereas, the Shelby Cycle Company swiftly gained national and international recognition, notably with the introduction of the Whippet bicycle at a bicycle trade show in New York in nineteen twenty-seven. And whereas, this iconic name became synonymous with excellence due to the extraordinary feats of transcontinental cyclist Clarence "Whippet" Wagner, who in nineteen twenty-seven shattered his own record by riding a Shelby Whippet three, a hundred and six, I'm sorry, Shelby Whippet, three thousand one hundred and sixty-nine miles from Newport Beach to Atlantic City in a remarkable twenty days and seventeen hours after having trained in Shelby. And whereas, the Whippet name, originally proposed by salesman George Evans in honor of the nimble racing dog, also became a source of local pride, famously adopted by the Shelby High School basketball team in nineteen twenty-seven and twenty-eight, and the track team in nineteen twenty-nine, and solidified in football lore when a sports writer noted players ran like Whippets. And whereas, under the astute leadership of presidents such as John Strock Seltzer and H. Fly Brokaw, and through the inventive genius of Leon A. Smith, the company experienced substantial growth, expanding to one hundred and eighty thousand square feet, employing two hundred and fifty people, and producing an impressive five hundred bicycles a day by nineteen thirty-five. And whereas, by nineteen thirty-seven, the Shelby Cycle Company emerged as a national leader responsible for one-third of all of Ohio's bicycle output, manufacturing over two hundred thousand custom-built bicycles annually, with four hundred employees working three shifts, day and night. And whereas, Leon A. Smith's pioneering innovation significantly enhanced riding comfort and manufacturing efficiency, including the shock ease, shock-absorbing steering fork in nineteen forty, and later innovative machines for wheel assembly and tire mounting. And whereas, during World War II, the Shelby Cycle Company demonstrated remarkable adaptability and patriotic duty, pivoting from bicycle production to defense contracts, producing vital war materials such as rangefinder telescope tubes for tanks, gun shells, and two hundred and twenty-two thousand sub-caliber airplane rockets for the U.S. Navy, meeting extreme accuracy requirements and even completing contracts after the war's end. And whereas, following the war, the company resumed full bicycle production, securing contracts with major national retailers, including Western Auto Stores, Gamble Stores, and Sears-Roebuck. And whereas, despite its enduring success, the company faced increased competition leading to its sale in nineteen fifty-three, following Leon Smith's retirement, with operations eventually moving out of Shelby by the end of that year, and the beloved Shelby name ultimately ceasing to be used in bicycles manufacturing within a decade. Now therefore I, Stephen L. Chang, Mayor of the city of Shelby, do hereby proclaim July seventh, two thousand twenty-five as a day to honor and reflect upon the remarkable legacy of the Shelby Cycle Company and its profound impact on our community's heritage and the national bicycle industry, celebrating the one-hundredth anniversary of its formal establishment. Let us forever remember the ingenuity, dedication, and entrepreneurial spirit that defined this pivotal chapter in Shelby's history. In witness whereof, I have nary to set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Shelby to be fixed this seventh day of June in the year of our Lord, two thousand and twenty-five. And Mr. Christina Drane, who is the all things Shelby cycle, would gladly present this proclamation to you, and if you would like to say a few words in regard to this great heritage that we have.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
I only have a few short words. Part of my committee is here with me. Jeff Angeliti is here. He's the one that's responsible for putting all the bicycles in the windows. Um, we've also got Brian Studer. He is now an expert at putting together a hundred-year-old bicycle this weekend, so he's going to be a great help. He'll also be leading our slow roll, which I'll tell you about in a second. And then my granddaughter, Zoe Daniels, is here. She lives in Columbus now in Marengo, but she's been coming for about the last four years and helping to volunteer, so she's an integral part of our committee. Also in the back is Kristen. She is the co-chair of Shelby Bicycle Days, and she's on a phenomenal job. I've never seen so many activities this year as I've seen in the last probably twelve years that I've been involved, so wonderful. Kudos to her and her group, too. Couple of things I want to show you. Someone might want to know, someone might know what this is. This is Charlie Robb's house, and you didn't know, probably Connie. I talked to Connie about it. This is part of our slow roll. We're calling it the Shelby Steel and Wheel Tour. We're going to hit about ten different locations, ten o'clock on Saturday morning. You can ride your bike. They'll be up all weekend, so you can drive through, too, if you'd like to, and we'll have everything posted on our website, so you don't know which locations to go to. There's about five or six historic homes, including Joe Seltzer, this Benjamin Williams, the Coakley House, there's some others, too. Leon Smith's house is where we're going to end up, so. So, a great tour. We'll go by our slow middle, we'll go by some of the factors that aren't there anymore, and talk about, you know, what was there at the time. So, that's one thing. If you have kids or grandkids, you want to pick out a brochure on your way out, we have Shelby, Bobby Shelby History Hunt. There's eight questions here, and the kids can go around town to the window planes downtown, or they can also find the answers here in the lobby or on our website, and so they get a prize when they turn this in. So, it's going to be a lot of fun, I think. Parents can help with this, grandparents can help, too. So, thank you so much for your time and your support.
Do you want to say a word about Friday evening at six o'clock?
Oh, yeah. Friday evening, so we've got an open house here, but Friday evening and then all day Saturday, and Friday evening, we're going to have a celebration to kick it off. That'll be six o'clock. You should have all gotten invitations to it, so. There'll be just a few brief words from the mayor and from me, and then we have cookies and, and some refreshments, so. And this will be a chance for you to talk to a lot of the collectors that'll be here. The bikes will all be here, the whole lobby will be full of bikes. We have people coming from Missouri, Illinois, Pennsylvania, Indiana, bringing the bikes in, so it's, it's going to be a lot of fun. We will have the Whippet that we talked about in the proclamation. The Whippet will be here, two new riders letting us borrow it for the weekend. The one-hundred-year-old bike will be here, and I also have an ideal bicycle, which was the first bike made in Shelby, and that will be on display, too. So, a lot of good stuff, a lot of good history. Thank you.
Bicycle Days is more than just a parade. If you think you see it as a great history, connect with our, our festival for once. Thank you. Thank you. All right. Any questions or comments from you in regard to my report? All right, let's move forward then to Mr. Crum, our Director of Finance.
Thank you, sir. Pretty normal activities over my departments. We do have the audit team on site this week. They'll be here tomorrow morning for their first day. Few auditors this year, so we'll have to show them where everything is. Other than that, we are in the beginning stages of our transition of our accounting software. It'll be within maybe a couple of weeks, and we'll, we'll start building our, our programs and shows. That's pretty well all I have, thank you, sir.
Mr. Crum? Any comments or questions for Mr. Crum in regard to his report? Thank you, sir. Mr. Ice has informed us earlier he will not be this evening. So, that takes us to Mr. Joe Geis, our project coordinator.
Thank you, Mayor. We did have a meeting with our payment contractor. They did not give us the date yet, but it shouldn't be too long. They started doing locates on curb ramps, but don't imagine that would be too much longer. I always like to do that before school, show the world your talents. Our Progress Drive storm line, we are still running into a conflict with a gas line, so we're working with that company, and they actually didn't locate, so hopefully that will get resolved soon, and we can get going on that project. And Curtis Drive, that, that project has been awarded to assignments in construction. It's below as well, below the estimate of the dollar amount here with me, but the manholes are sitting there, so they should begin to start again soon. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Any comments or questions for Mr. Geis in regard to his report? There we go. Let's move forward then to new business. Is there any new business that you brought before council? New business, unfinished business, smokestack, we haven't really done much since the last episode, we've been kind of busy. We'll try to see if we can get some, some new information to you next week, but it is all in the air. Any other unfinished business? Let's move forward to legislation.
Ordinance number fifteen, two thousand twenty-five. Proposing an amendment to section fifty-three of the Charter of the city of Shelby and submitting such a proposed amendment to the electors. Should I read it?
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Robertson, and a second by Mr. McGlocklin for the second reading of ordinance number fifteen, two thousand twenty-five. Discussion. Mr. McGlocklin.
Mayor, I'd like to say a few things for the public that's sitting here. So, I sponsored this ordinance, this, tonight's the second reading. This proposed amendment to the section fifty-three of the Charter allows us to submit the proposed amendment to the electors, so that they can vote on this in November on Election Day. Our charter allows for that, but it requires four out of five votes on council to pass that. The Ohio Revised Code, section thirty-five thirteen point oh five, was changed in two thousand fourteen, and so at this point, Ohio Revised Code and the Shelby's ordinances are, are, say, two different things. Shelby's Charter says fifty, fifty-year parts, seventy-five days to follow, back to filing petition versus Ohio Revised Code's ninety days, so there's like a two-week difference. So, I see four benefits of passing this to the citizens of Shelby. I see no negative aspects to, to doing this. Number one, it gives to the electors, so instead of the five of us passing it or not passing it, this allows us to see what the voters think. Number two, it syncs up, if it does pass, it syncs us with Ohio law. Number three, and this is probably the most important thing, the Shelby citizens will get two weeks to challenge somebody's petition, where at this point, we, they only get one day. And then finally, it does help the Board of Elections team, which we are part of. There's eighty-three precincts in the county, Shelby is eight of those, and so we're basically a team with the county in making sure our elections kick off and are, you know, successful. So, it would help them if Shelby is in sync with the rest of the county. Again, there's at least four benefits to this, to the citizens of Shelby. I see no negative aspects. If there are any negative aspects, you know, I'd like to hear what they are from the colleagues.
Thank you. Further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Martin.
Yea.
Mr. McGlocklin.
Yea.
Mr. Robb.
Yea.
Mr. Roberts.
Yea.
Mr. Cutlet.
Yea.
Ordinance number fifteen, two thousand twenty-five passes as second reading.
Ordinance number seventeen, two thousand twenty-five. Amending chapter ten forty, water, section ten forty point oh four, rules, regulations, and fixed charges for municipal water system H. Additional charges to consumer insights and limits, rule forty-five, and economy portances of the city of Shelby, Ohio. Two thousand and thirty.
Second. We have a motion by Mr. Robertson, and a second by Mr. Martin for the third reading of ordinance number seventeen, two thousand twenty-five. Discussion. Roll call, please.
Mr. Martin.
Yea.
Mr. McGlocklin.
Yea.
Mr. Robb.
Yea.
Mr. Roberts.
Yea.
Mr. Cutlet.
Yea.
Ordinance number seventeen, two thousand twenty-five passes as third reading.
Passes in the ordinance?
Second. We have a motion by Mr. Robertson, and a second by Mr. Martin for the passage of ordinance number seventeen, two thousand twenty-five. Discussion. Roll call, please.
Mr. Martin.
Yea.
Mr. McGlocklin.
Yea.
Mr. Robb.
Yea.
Mr. Roberts.
Yea.
Mr. Cutlet.
Yea.
Order number seventeen, two thousand twenty-five passes.
Ordinance number eighteen, two thousand twenty-five. Amending Chapter four forty-six, four forty-six. Non vehicles, off-highway motorcycles, and all-purpose vehicles are economy by ordinances of the City of Shelby, Ohio. Second reading.
Second.
Who was the second reading? Mr. Martin? We have a motion by Mr. Robertson and a second by Mr. Martin for the second reading of ordinance number eighteen, two thousand twenty-five. Discussion. Mr. Martin?
The only one that hasn't weighed in on this yet, as I was not here the previous meeting. Looking at this, I would say that I'm very hesitant to pass legislation on what happens on private property, for those who own a property. The, that is always my hesitation. I will say, though, in certain instances, it's important for us to do that if people cannot maintain, we'll call it a neighborly attitude towards their neighbors. A political science professor of mine once said that self-governance is important, but you either self-govern, or you're going to be governed. Those are the two dynamics. And unfortunately, when there are people who are causing ruckus, or they're not being neighborly, they're going to be governed if they can't self-govern, if they can't figure out their own stuff. I do find this ordinance, a couple of things. I do think this ordinance is too restrictive, though. I think that it can be a much better piece of legislation than the foot currently before us. But I don't know if the normal course of city council is beneficial to those ends. And so, pending what my colleagues think, I think that this might be something that is better to cook a little longer in a committee where we can, I think, produce a much better product than what is before us and isn't, I don't know, fixable by simple minimum form before us today. So, that is my feeling, something matter.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yeah. I said it the first reading, and I'll say it again. I, as Mr. Martin says, I, you know, I don't want to, I don't want to have to legislate what you can and can't do on your own property. That's, you know, you shouldn't have to do that. We have a situation where people are not being smart with what they do, and I don't want that to affect other people. You know, I bought a lot beside my house, and I have grandchildren, and they're at their bike, and they're at a four wheeler on that lot. If they were to cause the issues that would be caused in some place, I would shut down. I wouldn't do it anymore because you have to, you know, I probably ride stop when they infringe on somebody else's property. You know, so there, you know, so there's the loss that we have right now. So, I had two pieces of information today that I did not have in the first reading. So, I will move to refer this to the Safety Committee for more talks.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Robertson and a second by Mr. Robb to defer the ordinance number eighteen, two thousand twenty-five, to the Safety Committee.
Referring.
Referring, that's right. Revert. To refer the ordinance number seventeen, two thousand twenty-five to the Safety Committee. That is the motion that is on the floor. Discussion. Mr. Martin?
I appreciate it. I think it's going to be better for those that are attendants. Our Safety Committee is on first Wednesday of the month. So, the next one will be August, I have it wrong. I should look it up. August second is the Saturdays, the third, fourth, sixth, August sixth.
Three thirty.
At three thirty. And so, if you would like to attend that, you're of course more welcome. This is a public meeting. I don't want anybody to assume that we're doing this to guys non-sunlight, who of course are welcome. It's a public meeting. I will say, though, social media is a fascinating thing. Sometimes I do believe it makes us a little bit more degenerate as a society. Now, there are a couple of things I would just would like to address. Yes, while, while a lot of us here have inklings of what people do on their own private property should be their own private business, that's our first, our deference, right? That is not absolute. So, for people to say that I can do whatever I want on my private property is not only completely inaccurate, it is antithetical to what we believe as Americans and the American experiment. Nothing can be further from the truth. You know, it's not absolute in its running. I cannot much to the appreciation, I'm sure, of my fellow travelers. I cannot go out and sunbathe naked in my yard, even though it's my private property. That's just the facts. There are things I cannot do, whether it's on my private property or not. I cannot decide to set up massive amounts of just, you know, gun, gunshot or anything within the city limits. I cannot house giraffes or elephants on our private property, as fascinating as that may be, as expensive as that may be. There are certain things I just cannot do on my own private property. It's not absolute. As is most cases, we weigh these things amongst others. So, it's a matter of, like Council Robert said, it's weighing what is appropriate for us to do on our own private property and how it affects others outside of the private property. So, I just wanted to make sure that, give a little bit of a civics lesson, as I am a social studies teacher, and that's what I'm trying to do, that those, these, a lot of these rights that we talk about, one, aren't necessarily rights in the Constitution, but two, are not absolute. So, let's just be mindful of that when we have these discussions and discourse. Let's try to be smarter about our discourse on social media. But I do appreciate this. I think it will be much better done in Safety Committee, and I hope that the final product is definitively worthy of citizens' worth.
Mr. Robb?
And I didn't want to say, too, you know, I know a lot of you guys, you know. I mean, you know, you know me. And I got one phone call from somebody sitting in that gallery right now. Call us if you have issues with something that we do. Just a call. You know, there's a lot of things we can discuss, you know, so don't get blown out of proportion. There's a lot of things we can discuss, you know, over the phone, face-to-face, whatever, and maybe we can make things make more sense. So, you know, we, you know, our phone numbers are public. If you've got problems, you know, you can always give us a call. We can talk about things. We give us your opinions, you know, face-to-face. So, I know sometimes that social media, it's, you know, it's just, it gets blown up. You know, we can talk better face-to-face. And then if you don't like something we say, we'll ask it, you know. You know, that's one thing. So, anyway.
Any further discussion on the motion to refer to the Safety Committee? That is the motion on the floor. All right, this is the motion to refer to the Safety Committee. Roll call, please.
Mr. Martin?
Yay.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yay.
Mr. Robb?
Yay.
The motion to refer passes.
First one, everybody, just a call.
Ordinance number five, plead, two thousand twenty-five. Amending Chapter four two, generally, are economy by ordinances of the City of Shelby, Ohio.
We have a motion by Mr. Robertson and a second by Mr. Martin for the second reading of ordinance number nineteen, two thousand twenty-five.
Mr. Martin?
Yay.
Mr. Robb?
Yay.
Mr. Roberts?
Yay.
Order number nineteen, two thousand twenty-five passes as the second reading.
Ordinance number twenty, two thousand twenty-five. Amendment, ordinance number eight, two thousand twenty-five, annual appropriations and authority emergency. Who needs rules requiring that ordinance be done on three separate occasions be suspended?
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Roberts and a second by Mr. Martin that the rule requiring that an ordinance be done on three separate occasions be suspended. Discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Martin?
Yay.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yay.
Mr. Robb?
Yay.
Motion to suspend passes. We have a motion by Mr. Martin and a second by Mr. Roberts for the passage of ordinance number twenty, two thousand twenty-five. Discussion. Mr. Crum?
Thank you, sir. The court received a grant for some IT upgrades. It was, the grant was received before, we were not expecting it. Already received, actually. They applied for it, they were awarded it, but we didn't have enough money in the lineups to actually make those upgrades. So, this change adds funds to the computers that go behind, of course, to use those.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Martin?
Yay.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yay.
Mr. Robb?
Yay.
Order number twenty-two, two thousand twenty-five passes.
Ordinance number twenty-one, two thousand twenty-five. Vacating an alley that runs perpendicular to West Main Street between lots five seventy-eight, five seventy-five, forty-seven, and five seventy-six within the City of Shelby, Richland County, Ohio. Who needs first reading?
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Robertson and a second by Mr. Martin for the first reading of ordinance number twenty-one, two thousand twenty-five. Discussion. Roll call, please.
Mr. Martin?
Yay.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yay.
Mr. Robb?
Yay.
Mr. Roberts?
Yay.
Order number twenty-one, two thousand twenty-five passes as first reading.
Ordinance number twenty-two, two thousand twenty-five. Enacting Section two oh four point oh eight, Hunter Memorial Street, of Chapter two oh four, Official Standards, of the Economy by ordinances of the City of Shelby. Who needs first reading?
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Robertson and a second by Mr. Martin for the first reading of ordinance number twenty-two, two thousand twenty-five. Discussion. Mr. McLaughlin?
I just want to start out by saying, even though I sponsored this, the idea was former Mayor Garland Gates' idea for this. So, I'm giving the credit. And the other, the other thing is, so this is Leslie Lane, and the proposal here is to make it the secondary name Hunter Memorial Street. So, you know, we might want to think about, you know, whether we want the secondary name to be Lane along with Leslie Lane versus Street. But this is the first reading, so we have time to think about it.
Mr. Martin?
My two cents, I think that Memorial Lane sounds much better than Memorial Street. That's, you know, I like that. The first, first reading.
Further discussion for the first reading? Roll call, please.
Mr. Martin?
Yay.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yay.
Mr. Robb?
Yay.
Mr. Roberts?
Yay.
Order number twenty-two, two thousand twenty-five passes as first reading. Well, we've made our way to miscellaneous business. Mr. McLaughlin?
Let's see. So, this has to deal with ordinance fifteen, twenty twenty-five. Today really was supposed to be the third reading of that ordinance. And of course, we postponed it, so Mr. Robb could be here and all that. So, we're a little behind. There's two, yeah, so there's basically two reasons we're going to need to call a special meeting. Again, of course, Mr. Robb won't be here for the next meeting on the twenty-first of this month. So, he won't be here. And then secondarily, we have a deadline approaching of six August to get it to the Board of Elections. So, I'd like to figure out when we could hold maybe a special council meeting within the next week or two before Mr. Robb leaves, where we can give us its third reading. Just to give us enough time to know if any other voters want to weigh in and allow the press to let the folks know we've passed the second reading, so.
I believe I have the authority to call for a special meeting. When are you leaving?
Twenty-first, which would be the same, same day as the council meeting. But I'll be leaving in the AM hour or so.
This is the seventh. I'm being fine that we have a week between letting you know, having a special meeting on the fourteenth, just to give, again, the public another week to, I don't know if anyone's heard of any, but just to give the public another week to chime in. Mr. McCoughlin?
I'll be out.
On the fourteenth? Fourteen, fifteen, sixteen. Did I hear anything about the seventeenth? Seventeenth?
I'll be here the seventeenth.
Everybody's wondering about the seventeenth? I'll, I'll do a little checking, and then I'll call for a special meeting. It looks like it's the seventeenth, but I'll make it official.
If it looks like the seventeenth, are we talking early in the council meeting versus later on?
What would be the preference?
Morning?
Morning, I would. Mr. Martin?
I'd fly out on the seventeenth, but not that it matters. We're moving this, so by no vote can kill it, so.
What time are you leaving on the seventeenth?
Early. Six thirty.
Oh, three thirty AM, maybe, then.
I'll be up.
The reason, the reason we're having this special meeting is so by no vote doesn't kill it, because the twenty-first gives us plenty of time to submit it.
Eh, well, you guys do what you want.
Whether I'm there or not is a consequence.
We'll figure out time. We'll do our very best to get all five of you, if at all possible, give you time for the audience, for the citizenry to chime in, and we'll try to find a legal course for everybody.
I appreciate the mayor's willingness to give the appearance of.
All right. So, keep an eye out for that special meeting. Well, we, again, we're bummed that we set deadlines. The council might walk on a set. They would put it off in three weeks if we had six months to do this, but we're done. All right. Any other miscellaneous business? Council, I remember.
At one, come out, enjoy Bicycle Days. Very good, but also the vendors downtown, everything. A lot of vendors downtown, they make, you know, around ten percent of their profit for the year during Bicycle Days. So, come out and support our local businesses, support those who have put a lot of effort, time, and energy into, one, making our downtown an enjoyable place to be. Us doing the updates that we do downtown is meaningless if we just have a bunch of empty buildings around it, right? So, please come out and support all the local businesses down there, and also support the Bicycle Days team. They've done a fantastic job of putting a lot of events together for everybody, old, young alike. It's one of the wonderful opportunities for us to come together as a true community and enjoy each other's company and fellowship, and also celebrate heritage that we did so richly recently. So, come out and enjoy that. That, Mayor, and I move to Council adjutant.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Martin and a second by Mr. McLaughlin for adjutant. Roll call, please.
Mr. Martin?
Yay.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yay.
Mr. Robb?
Yay.
Mr. Roberts?
Yay.
Motion passes. Council adjutant, seven forty-seven.